Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon. First of all, I want to appreciate everybody taking time out of their busy schedules to do our annual budget workshop. So as you see here in the room, we have a lot of support here today in case there are any questions and clarifications from specific department budgets that myself or admin may not be able to answer. But as usual, we have a fairly extensive presentation to go through. I will kick it off. I hand it off to Melody for a little while, and then she'll hand it back off to me. We do have, along with the typical feedback that we would want to get, also have some specific directives that we're looking for. And we do have somebody from the audience from North Point today who can help with answering those questions. When we get there, we'll try to make sure that we get to that point before we know that you have to leave. So thank you for making us aware of that. But without further ado, we will-
Are we working on this screen?
Dive right in. I hope so. Nick, do we have that screen on? It would take a quick moment to get that turned on.
I could've turned it on. That's all it needed.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. And just want to remind you first about the process that we go through. This is a six-month process. It starts around the holidays when we do some initial work on getting things ready to roll. It really starts, I would say, in earnest in January where we hand it off to our department heads to start working on their budget requests. While they're doing that, we will typically work on the capital improvement budget first and try to get that in a good first draft and shape and get that to where we have it to propose to you today with obviously some regular fine tuning along the way. Department heads turn in their budget requests by mid-February, and then admin staff takes those, looks at them, looks at all that they have requested, pare that down, some things, then work with them one-on-one or whoever they have as part of their budget team. We go through every line item. They advocate as they should for what they feel that they need, and we work through that. Some things we support, some things we do pare down, all with trying to make sure that we stay within the means that we have. And I think that's the most important thing to say here is that this budget, as every single one that I've prepared, it stays within our means and within our resources. But I also think that this budget also provides us with what we need to continue to operate with how we currently are put together. So with that, your proposed operating budget for this year is $21,594,400. Most of that is your general fund, so that is all of your department funds, $21,449,400. We do have $145,000 recommended in your special revenue funds. There are four of those that we will go over in a little bit. Most of those are police funds, but also you operate near cemetery through that special revenue fund. Your capital improvement budget is $4553,600. So the big picture, and you all are always familiar with that sign, I like to put up there every one of these, but we're continuing our five-year capital improvement plan. We determined the importance of that, continuing that. The tax rate, recommending that we maintain at 38.5 cents on the hundred. It's been the same tax rate since the fiscal year 2019, so this will be the sixth consecutive budget that it will have had 38.5 cent tax rate. And just so you know, in case you're wondering what a penny on the tax rate is, is approximately $331,000. It's actually just a little bit more, but I went ahead and rounded it off to that number for ease. That takes into account the real property, prior years, and motor vehicle taxes to calculate. Keep in mind that not our entire budget revenues are property taxes or motor vehicle taxes. We also receive sales use tax and other things that Melody will go over here in just a few minutes. So that's just part of the equation, but that is what a penny is on the property tax And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Melody, who will go over the revenues and then go over the department budgets.
Thank you, Jeff. Good afternoon. So when preparing this year's budget, we were conservative with what and how we budgeted. And so if you look at the revenues over the last three years, the increase has been steady and consistent. And so with the total estimated revenues for the general fund are at $21,449,400. So the property tax is the largest revenue source that the town has. It's estimated at a collection rate of 99% and coming in at $11,470,000. It is generally collected during the fall and winter seasons. And so then next, we have the prior year's taxes and penalties coming in at $20,000. The motor vehicle tax is the annual plate renewals collected by the DMV. This is estimated at 99% collection rate at $1,235,000. This is collected on a monthly basis and should not be confused with the municipal motor vehicle tax that is contributed to the small transportation plan. The sales and use tax, whenever we purchase something at Wax saw, that money goes to the state and Wax saw receives a portion of that back. And so the amount that we're expecting to receive will be $5,370,000. And so then that is received on a monthly basis. Right now, for this year, we are currently tracking over $5.4 million. For franchise tax, we are estimating $1 million, and that is dependent on weather and utility costs and is collected on a quarterly basis. So this year, we are currently tracking over $1 million for FY '24. Other revenues includes the alcohol sales from the ABC store, the portion that the town receives, as well as beer and wine, planning, engineering, and parks and rec fees, and then building inspections revenues. That's coming in at $200,000, as well as interest earned. So we are budgeting conservatively in that area at $600,000. This year, we've collected over $1 million, and we're anticipating collecting $1.3 million by the end of this fiscal year. The transfer from fund balance for the building inspections is $360,000. That is to keep that function operational until January 2025, which is when we're anticipating new homes starting to be built again and those inspections starting to happen. So some of these projects coming online are the Preserve Old Town Village and Blythe Mill Town Homes. And then the transfer from general fund is $639,400. That is to cover the capital vehicles and equipment costs. We're conservative just in case the amount of revenues are not received that are anticipated. So for example, this year, we are currently tracking to collect over $21 million in revenue. So we may not have to make that transfer. All right, so moving on, we have highlights of the budget. So we have Waste Pro contract, which does the trash recycling and yard waste pickup. We are currently on year two of five of that contract. It also includes the police building upfit debt payment. So three years ago, we refinanced that loan and saved over the life of the loan $112,000. That loan will be paid off in 2028. And then we have, with the move to town campus, the town hall lease will be sunsetted, and so we've planned for three months of lease expense underneath the admin budget. And we'll be transitioning to a month-to-month basis for those payments, planning to exit quickly because there's a lot of interest in that building. And then with the town campus debt payment, that budget is $1.7 million. That's included under the admin budget. This budget also includes the establishment of a facilities maintenance team. This is a new department, new budget, and so the main goal here is to be proactive about building maintenance and to take that responsibility off current staff to maintain buildings like the police department. And then we also, over the last few years, have been planning to hire a full-time communications director, and so that's what we are bringing forward in this budget. And with that, Haven Creative will provide support once that happens through strategic marketing. With the salary study, those numbers are included in this budget, so any employees that received a market adjustment will be received through this budget. And leadership has committed to providing salary study every other year just to make sure that we stay consistent with the market. It also includes streetlights at $250,000, the facade improvement program at $65,000, which is same as last year, and then also a full event schedule. So moving on to personnel expenses, it's typical for personnel expenses to take up at least 50% of your total expenses. And so at this year's, well, moving back, for this budget, it's at 52%. Over the last couple of years, we've been tracking around 50%. At this year's board retreat, direction was received from the board to add needed positions within our existing means, and so that's what we have done. There are 111 positions proposed in the budget. Eleven are new, five are part-time, six are full-time, with two being budgeted for half a year. That includes two part-time police officers for the community, two part-time customer service, one part-time rec tech, two full-time facilities maintenance, that's budgeted half a year, two full-time public services, a communications director that's also budgeted half a year, engineering director. And so all employees will receive the cost of living of 3.2% if they, except if, let's see, unless they received a market adjustment through the salary study. Either way, they're receiving it. So the merit increase, all employees will also be eligible for that, up to 3%. And that's at the discretion of the department head. We also provide longevity pay as well as life insurance, paid maternity leave, medical insurance costs, NC retirement, and supplemental retirement. All right, so we're on the department highlights. The board of commissioners' budget is at $127,000. This is related to official town business of the board. The administration budget is at $3.3 million. This is administered by our town manager, Jeffrey Wells, and it is the day-to-day administration for the town. It includes an attorney contract, which is a contracted position. Our current attorney is retiring as of June 30th, and we are currently searching for a new attorney. It also includes the lobbyist contract, which is provided by our Deborah Conrad. In the last two years, the town has received over $5 million in appropriation funds from the state for various projects, and so we can't thank Deborah enough for all her efforts on behalf of the town. We feel like it has been well worth it. So we've already talked about the current town hall and town campus debt payment underneath the admin budget. And so contingency is also included under this budget of 1% at $200,000. All right, next we have finance, which is administered by our finance director, Rosie Dodd. This is the day-to-day accounting for the town. It includes the audit contract. The amount for this budget is $458,000. Tax budget, she also oversees that. That's at $153,000. That includes the fee of 1.25% that's paid to Union County for the collection of Wax saw's property taxes. Then we have our communications director, Jenny Volkolt, that oversees communications. They provide a communication strategy for the town as well as crisis management, media relations, and website and social media. And so we've already talked about hiring a comms director full-time that's included within this budget.
Can I stop you and ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
So we'd be hiring a comms director, but then also have the contract with Haven Creative?
Yes, for support, like with strategy marketing or strategic marketing. And so the purpose behind that is we'll have a two-person team. However, it would take potentially more people to do all the work, and so that would just be providing that support.
But isn't some of it going to be taken from Haven Creative?
Yes.
And it's sort of phasing Haven Creative out?
That's correct, yes.
How long would the phase out be? How long would it take to phase out?
Hello. So the way that we have it right now, originally we were going to try to hire someone, I think by July 1, and we realized, okay, we need a little bit of time. So what we're doing is having us support. Hopefully, we'll get someone filled in before December. And when we do that, I think it'll be about 90 days to where we really get that person rolling. And then from there, I said, remember, I gave the Swiss cheese reference, whatever holes or gaps are missing, we can renegotiate from there if we're needed at all.
And so, I'm sorry, you know, you've done a lot of work over the years with branding and all of that, so we would still retain-
Absolutely.
-all of that. So I guess my question is, do we need a full-time comms person if we have all the work that you've already done? And I know that a lot of the departments are taking care of social media photos and that sort of thing. Is there any leeway there?
To not have a director?
To not have a director and just, and I know there's crisis management, but do we have a public information officer that can do that?
No, that's in that role. Yeah, so typically, the comms director is the PIO typically for a community. And the reason that they're normally full-time is because they are in the ins and outs of the everyday. And as you know, the last, I think, what, nine years, I've been serving that role, but I don't know if it's where I've heard, maybe it's not as efficient as if we had someone inside that was in the office 24/7. Of course, you're going to get more time with that person versus the fractional time with us. So it's really a preference. It's not to say one's better than the other, but it seems like over the years, having someone internally might help support the staff from what I've heard, better.
What are the current receipts to Haven on last year? And how does that compare to this new budget of comms director and staff?
The receipts? You mean the contract?
How much have we paid Haven?
So the contract, if I'm going off the top of my head, is for $130,000 a year to be contracted with Haven Creative and then the full-time-
Well, that's moving forward. I'm wondering what we've done in the last fiscal year, for instance?
It was that the last fiscal year as well, yes.
Okay.
And so this upcoming budget has Haven Creative at a reduced cost to be able to support. But one of the reasons why we have a comms director for half of the years, because we don't have anywhere to put them right now until we do move into a new building. So remember back, we've had two or three retreats now where we've talked about having a transition of a comms department, a planned transition over a four- or five-year time period.
So what is it we're getting specifically with in-house comms versus, you know, the less than $150,000 we're spending on out-of-house comms? So in other words, we're looking at a core million dollars for in-house comms, and we're spending less than $200,000 on outsourcing comms. So on paper, it currently looks like a better value to continue to outsource comms than it does to bring it in-house.
Oh, well, there's no question it's a better value, but it's indicative of the growth of our community and what our needs will be moving forward and having somebody that we can walk down the hall and talk to and also talk about increasing our marketing opportunities. You recall, within our town hall, there will be a green room to be able to up our game as far as communicating out to the communities, increasing the ability to work and do our, as Jenny calls, our strategic marketing.
So maybe another way to think of it is, has Haven thought of, maybe, what would the cost be for an FTE, somebody fully dedicated to the town from Haven, or maybe even half an FTE versus a full-time-
Yeah, no, it's a great question. We haven't discussed that before, but maybe four or five years ago, we thought about that, could I sit in the office and be the FTE and what have you? And moving forward, like, it couldn't be me specifically, but if you'd rather save on having the overhead cost of an employee, we could discuss that as an option and hire that person internally. But that's kind of how we ended up with having Tamiya work for the town versus going through us. That discussion came up. I don't know if I answered your question.
No, yeah, you did. But there is a value in outsourcing this specific skill set that you have and your ability to stay up to date on the trends and the best way to market for municipality.
I think the more critical thing is having that emergency management PIO when the media things pop up, like, you know, the different interviews that come up, like, even though I was in Singapore, Ian was able to communicate with you and having kind of that redundancy, having two people that can sort of support each other in the role.
So this is the last year, though, that you would be handling it, right?
Mm-hmm. That's the plan.
Okay.
So does the police department currently have an emergency information officer?
They don't. In the future, they should. I mean, technically, right now, we have someone that does speak on their behalf. But in a lot of, like, let's say Huntersville, Monroe, actually Monroe's, their comms director is their PIO for police and the town in general. But some of the communities will have their own fire one and their own police one, and then the one for the government. So it depends.
But you, as an outside contracting agency who specializes in this, I mean, should, God forbid, something come up, you're able to ramp that up pretty quickly.
Absolutely. And we're going to be attending, we have the tabletop exercise, I'm sure you've all heard about, I'm going to attend that, putting Tamiya in that as well, and then Ian on my team is going through that. So we have, again, that redundancy, so, you know, moves, shoot, communicate, right? Everyone's behind it if you need another person to step in. So I think even if, let's say in the future, you get a comms person and you wanted to contract just on an emergency basis, you know, like I said, to fill that gap that's not there, and, you know, maybe it's a reduction in that full-time salary to have like a manager and not a director, and, you know, there's a lot of different ways you could fill the roles that you need. We were just saying that I think having someone in-house does serve a different, you know, you're getting more time with that person than the fractional time, maybe the 130 that you're getting.
I've been trying to get her to sell her business and be the comms director for the town for quite a few years, but just, she's not-
I don't know how many times we have to try and tell her this.
Yeah. I don't know. Halfway dead anyway, everything's killing you.
What communication misses do you feel like we've had? What misses in communication do you feel like we've had with, you know, not having this director?
Misses?
Like, what have we-
It's hard to say, what did we not do, right?
What have we missed? What have we not done?
I think, like, for an example, some of the times when we have the floods in the water, it's difficult as a contractor to jump off of another job and come sleep at the fire or the police department, you know, and answer those things that happen. Remember Rita? And right now, the town pays extra when it's after hours like that, whereas I think if it was a salary, you know, as part of the rest of the, I think that maybe there'd be overtime costs, but that gets hard. And then having, like you were saying, someone, the photos from events and certain things, like, I think there's just more expectation of the hours and involvement of having someone full-time versus a part-time person, not part-time, but contract person. But I mean, I think it's, I'm not going to sit here and trash the work we've done. I think we've done a pretty good job being external. Sorry, I'm on the call on the mic. Sorry about that.
You know, when more money's being asked for, you know, you want to see justification.
Absolutely. And I can understand, I mean, obviously, I'm a taxpaying resident as well, so I always look at it and go like, what makes sense? And for the first, you know, nine years or so, that's what we always said, is like, you're getting a team of five versus having someone internal. But I think as Jeff was saying, the town is maturing, and you'll probably get more time, and you'll see more out of a person internally, then all of a sudden, people will probably like us a lot less in the departments because we are telling them, no, you can't send that out. That's not on brand. This is how, you know, uniforms that you're wearing. Union County, as an example, didn't have a comms department up until 2019, and so they got along just fine without comms, they thought. But then Liz came in, and now there's a lot more structure, the signage all throughout, and so much more programming and redesigning of everything on the backend. So it's not what's missing, it's what can be done, you know, to be better in a lot of cases.
Perhaps I can make this easy from the reading the room here, but so what I'm gathering is, and now remember back to our retreat discussion, we had this discussion, so that's what we were moving forward with, but I hear more of a inclination, I guess you could say, to stick with the current structure that we have. Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
That wasn't my, I mean, I'm perfectly, I like the idea of having an inside communications director. I was, the budget for that, the large budget was what was confusing to me. And now I understand, because you're saying there's a contract for part of the year, and then this other person's going to take over.
Yes, so it's comms director, it's the Tamiya's position now, as well as the supporting contract from Haven Creative fulfills that $292,000.
I mean, that's a big budget item for communications, I think.
Yeah.
Especially for getting the same for less.
Well, if you think about it, I mean, in the, so we shifted the contract cost out of admin, moved that into communications, so that cost is not in admin now. Tamiya's position was also in admin. That shifted out, shifted over to comms, and so that takes up a majority of it, and then the rest is filled by the half-of-the-year comms director position. I mean, there's some residual stuff like training and office supplies and things like that.
So this is just for an overlap until the end of the year, which is why that budget is so high, and that's just what you're saying. And then come next year's budget, when Haven has moved out, then that line item number will be reduced because you'll already have the in-person in-house now.
Well, that depends on what kind of services we would still want to have from Haven Creative moving forward. I think that would be a-
As support.
Yes, as support.
I guess that would be my concern, how much support. If she's doing a great job now, and we don't need extra support, let's stay with what we're doing. I mean, I just feel like if we have a team of people that's working-
I mean, I just feel like if, if we have a team of people that's working, why mess with that? I don't know. And then we're, if we're taking on an employee, we're taking on pensions and insurance and all of that to infinity and beyond.
You, you do, yes, you do. Now, I, we've been getting along for a good while this way, and we've been talking about it for, I don't know how many years now. We can certainly continue to go along this way. That's really not a problem. Um, I do think, though, at some point, we are going to have to take that plunge. It's just a matter of when we're comfortable doing that.
Well, I, I'm assuming that a comms director would be able to ha, um, whoever's gonna be hired is gonna be qualified to handle all of those, um, tasks that, that Jenny's doing with her entire team. So usually that's the case, right?
Yeah, so, um, the, the most important task being the emergency management, brand management, communication plan. I would hope, right, that a director would oversee all of that. Now, whether or not that person can do graphic design?
Right.
Usually can't. You know, can't video production, probably not. And that's okay. You know, like, those are smaller things that can be filled in, um...
They can be contracted out, right? Hired out or whatever, yeah.
I mean, that's kind of how we work. So like the city of Monroe, for example, they have a comms director and a comms manager, and they contract with us for special programming, so they just got great jobs, great cities. So we help them with, you know, the media buying, the billboards, whatever. Union County has two people. We helped them until they got to their team of five, but we did all the, um, UC flu campaigns and that kind of stuff. So it really just depends on like where the need is to save money for that municipality.
And do I remember correctly, I'm sorry, from the retreat, that the vision moving forward would to be to add to that department?
You could, but I didn't.
More?
Sorry. Let me, let me cut you off.
No, no, no. So I was just curious if...
You could add, you know, like you said, like, as the community grows and if the need is there, but you really could also be a killer team with two for a while. So I've seen, I mean, Monroe has two. Um, Matthews has one. Um, Union County, of course, a lot larger. They have five now. But I mean, they kept growing as they started getting more programming. Back to your point, it's like, what can you do? And then when they started going, oh, we're doing the company store, now we're doing internal comms more. Now we're growing, and they took things away from other departments and put it back to comms where it should be, like, um, video production, all that really should live in comms. So it just depends over time.
It would be good to understand, you know, that savings in other departments and how it all interrelates.
So with moving, moving forward in this arrangement, ultimately, it's be like any other department. It's, it's going to grow as the operations need, as your service demand grows. And it's moving us in a position to be more self-sufficient in that. Uh, but yes, there will be a cost to personnel, uh, and those, those costs do, uh, they are a little bit different than having the contractual costs, there is no doubt about it. But you do have the benefit of having somebody that is, that is in-house, that is down the hall, be able to, uh, collaborate with your staff. Uh, and, and this is taking nothing away from Haven Creative. I mean, we've talked about this for a number, number of years and have a great relationship with her. And as I've said, I've, I know I've been trying to coax her into working here in Waxaw for a long time, but she just, I guess she just wants to be a private, uh, private business owner. We have, we do have a great thing here with comms, but we've been talking about this for several years and kind of moving in that roller coaster, uh, with it. But this is a year where it actually works and fits within the budget, and it seems like a good time to, to make that move if, um, if the board's comfortable with that. Of course, being the caveat, and, you know, as we talked about it at the retreat, we did have that discussion at the, the, the plan, the five-year plan. Um, and so that's what we move forward with. But that's why we're here. And, you know, maybe it, 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 uh, makes sense to, to hear the rest of it and see how everything else fits in first.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny and Jeff. All right, so next up, we have the facilities management team that will be led by myself. Um, the goal will be to grow that department into, uh, something more. Uh, so we're starting out manageable. We'll be managing the police department, public ser, the PSPR building and town hall. And, uh, we'll be checking in next year about budget time to assess, you know, where are we at currently and, uh, what can the team take on? Uh, so that budget is four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. So that includes the positions as well as building maintenance and utilities for the building. Some of this is estimated for PSPR and town campus, 'cause, uh, it's kind of hard at this point to determine how much that will be being that it's built, being built. Um, however, next year, we'll have a better idea of how much that cost will be. Um, and then next up, we have information technology. That's led by our IT director, Nick Bonweg. That budget is estimated to be one point one million dollars. And that includes, uh, the computers and software. They also do the, uh, freelance, uh, service utility, um, contractor. So they've done a lot of work for town campus, the TAP grant, downtown park, and the rec barn in terms of installing security cameras and so on. And so they've actually saved the town a lot of money doing so, uh, and have done it very well. Um, and...
Real quick on this one?
Yes, sure.
This line item grew a lot from last year as well. And is that because we're seeing a lot of equipment for the town campus that's, we're gonna be spending this year versus what we did last year?
Two main reasons behind one, one other reason, uh, but the, uh, the new finance software that was purchased, that is included in the IT budget, um, now, and so the maintenance on that. As well as, uh, this, this past, well, I guess this current year, we did not make any additional hardware purchases. We skipped a year. And so we are catching up. And so that is included in this budget along with just the, the typical, uh, minor increases to staff salaries that you see and then those expenses. But it's primarily finance software and computer hardware.
And has that hit on the finance software? Is that a annual license that we'll be paying or is that a one-time?
It's an annual license that we will be paying.
So going forward, we expect to see that same line item, that same size?
That's correct.
Excellent.
And with the hardware, like skipping it last year and, you know, that contributing to it being higher this year, does that mean, uh, it's probably gonna go down again next year?
Oh, well, we'll see next year. I, I don't know. Um, theoretically, yes. Uh, but, you know, next year's another year, so there's all new, all new requests and, and demands. So I would like for it to be that way, yes, but I can't guarantee that.
Well, that, that's kind of my larger question. Is this year's budget intended to equip the town campus?
Yes.
Will there be more coming after that?
Yes, but a lot of that expense to equip the town campus is within the town campus loan proceeds. Nick, you have something you'd like to add? You don't normally come to the door like that. Yeah.
The monitor's still on, huh?
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, next year is gonna be slightly different where our four- or five-year cycle's gonna come around where it's gonna be unfortunately another small, medium-sized hit because we have to replace all of our servers. They're all coming due at one time, and, uh, since they're all virtual, we're buying three major computers that we've bought four or five years ago that is now coming due. So that'll be in next year's budget. So it's not gonna decrease from next year from, from now. It'll be the same unfortunately. Now, the year after that, everybody can have, uh, Christmas gifts, but next year, we're gonna get another hit. Okay?
So the virtual servers that are being replaced, you're talking about, uh, the hypervisor, in-house hypervisor that's...
That's correct. Yeah. And there's three hosts that all of our stuff sits on. And you know something about IT, a lot of that's redundancy. And, uh, it also allows us to have some servers here and some servers off-site in case there's some kind of a disaster situation or catastrophe. Uh, we can easily spin up at a remote location.
Do we keep backups in case of ransomware, ransom attacks?
We got all kinds of good stuff that we actually implemented this year. Um, so, uh, if you wanna talk offline, I'll kind of explain how we do that. It's not something that we normally would broadcast across the internet of what we've got, so it's, uh...
Enough said.
Yeah. A lot of secret sauce.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to public services. This team is led by our public services director, Todd Matthews. And they primarily do streets, streetlights, grounds maintenance, as well as leaf pickup. They also do bulk pickup for specific items like white goods, TV, large TVs, grills. And so, um, he also, uh, their budget is one point nine million. Uh, he also manages the sanitation budget, which is the solid waste contract for solid waste, recycle and yard waste. Um, that budget is one point nine million. And then emergency management is estimated at two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That covers the safety supplies as well as the Waxaw volunteer fire department contribution that is annually provided. This team supports the administration of emergency management and safety. All right, next is police. So our police chief Dexter Wilson leads this team. They are responsible for keeping the community safe. And this budget is estimated at four point nine million dollars. It includes the debt service for the PD building as well as training. So our officers are required to have a high level of training for their positions. It also includes equipment and uniforms to outfit our officers. Next is human resources. So that team is led by our human resources director, Wendy Davenport. And they are responsible for, uh, recruitment of employees and, uh, the wellness program and appreciation program. That budget is four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Next is engineering. So we have the assistant town manager and town engineer, Matt Hubert, who's oversees this team. It's a seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar budget. And so they provide professional services, uh, related to development plan review, transportation planning and stormwater. And next, we have planning, which is led by our planning inspections director, Lisa Thompson. Uh, expenses underneath that, the planning budget is related to planning, zoning and subdivision administration. That budget is eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars. It includes the facade grant cost as well as the ARBIS contract. Also reporting to Lisa is the building inspections. They provide the building permit issuance and building construction inspection for the town. This budget is estimated to be five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. It includes the permitting, software maintenance, as well as the fund balance transfer that we, uh, that I mentioned earlier for maintaining the, the function. You also have code enforcement. That budget app is estimated at one hundred and eight thousand dollars. Includes the abatement expense. And then we have parks and recreation, which is led by our Parks and Rec director, Deana Sabinski. They are responsible for maine, maintaining the town's parks as well as hosting many events and programs. And so they also do public art and greenways and trails. Their budget is estimated at two point three million. And then last but not least, we have business development, which is led by our business development director, Ashley Knoll. And that team supports the current businesses that we have as well as, um, recruits new businesses to the town. At this budget includes the Main Street program administration. It's estimated at four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. So, uh, the amount proposed for contingency is two hundred thousand dollars. This follows the town's policy to reserve one percent of expected revenues for unexpected expenses. It also includes transfers for the pedestrian connectivity fund of one hundred thousand dollars. This is the second year that we have provided that function. Uh, so that is setting aside funding for greenways and trails, uh, and then also sidewalks. We're also setting aside some money in the capital reserve, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for capital expenses. And then also, this is the building inspections transfer for balancing that budget of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So the amount of unassigned fund balance from the last audit was two point seven million dollars, which equates to ninety-six thou, uh, ninety-six percent of the proposed FY25 operating budget, uh, which is well above the town's policy to maintain a thirty percent unassigned fund balance. This transfer from fund balance of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars is for the capital vehicles and equipment. And at this time, I will turn it back over to Jeff.
Thank you, Melody. So as I've, I've mentioned before and also by email, is there are a, a few things that have, uh, popped up or continued from the retreat that I would like to get some direction from the, uh, board on. And so in interest of time, uh, I think the first one we'll talk about will be the North Point Christian Academy's request to partner with the town. And, and I would like to introduce, uh, her up here. She can, uh, uh, tell her a little bit about herself and a little bit about, uh, North Point. Then also, uh, Chief Wilson, I think, will also chime in on this as well. But I will give the microphone to her for a, uh, moment or two to, uh, explain who she is and a little bit of the philosophy behind, uh, what they're trying to accomplish.
Good afternoon. My name is Kimberly Maslin, and I am the Director of Operations at North Point Christian Academy. So I'll give you a little sneak peek about what North Point's all about. Um, North Point was in the making for over ten years before we were able to launch. God finally opened our door, and, um, we have been providing an opportunity for many of the students within this community and surrounding communities on a daily basis. We opened our doors in August of twenty twenty-one, uh, where we had one class per grade, kindergarten through tenth, uh, kindergarten through tenth grade. Our very first year, we wrapped up our school year with a hundred and sixty-seven students. And if you do not know where we, our school is located, we're located on the campus of Forest Hill Church, right down the road. And, uh, we use their education wing for our lower school. And that leads me to, as we began our, our registration in January twenty twenty-two, we were growing very quickly. And we knew, um, that we were gonna have to take a leap of faith and, uh, put our trust in God and take every single penny out of savings that we had to add an additional space to serve these students and make the differences that we're making. So we ended up putting a twelve-classroom modular outback and another modular with bathrooms, and that serves as our upper school now. We are currently wrapping up, twelve days left of school, um, if you wanna know the exact number, with students on campus. But we're wrapping up our third year, and this is our first graduating class. Uh, we have six seniors, and all six seniors have been accepted into the college of their choice. So we have, uh, Liberty University, Elon University, North Carolina, Wilmington, Grand Canyon University. So just a lot of exciting things happening on our campus. We are a five oh one C three nonprofit organization, so we have no funding whatsoever except for the tuition that the students pay to attend our, um, school. We wanted to implement an officer on campus day one when we started. However, due to budget restraints, we were unable to do that. So, um, as we, the, and end of last year, I was able to meet with the chief. And starting this year, we were able to have an officer on campus five days a week. And we partnered with Waxaw very closely, and we're just paying them as an off-duty rate to serve and, um, to, um, ensure that safety for not only our students, but our, um, staff members as well. So we had the question, what sparks this request to the town? Um, we see the importance of having an officer on campus to ensure the safety of all of our students and staff. Oh, I think I just hit a button, sorry. Oh, I think I just hit a button, sorry. We would like to continue to have one school resource officer. We want to do that because we want to be able to foster those relationships with our students and families and for the years to come in the future. We also, we would also love to have the opportunity to have a DARE program to implement things like that on our campus. We want to bridge the gap between school, students, and the community. We want to continue to build the relationships within the community. We currently have 178 families that we serve. 99 families of those reside in the zip code of Waxall. So we serve a lot of the people within this community. Our, our goal in our heart belongs here in Waxall. We want to serve this community. We are a non-covenant Christian school, so what that means is we do not require families to profess a certain faith to get in. We see our school as a mission field. So we wanted to serve as many families as we can, and that's why we want to partner and have this request to have a full-time school resource officer dedicated to North Point.
Thank you, Chief, if you wanted to add to that.
Good afternoon. So I was approached by Kim Maslin at the beginning of the school year last year, or actually, it was toward the end of the school year last year in July, in reference to putting SROs in the school at North Point. It is a private school. At the time, they couldn't really go into a full-time position. So we made the agreement to do a off-duty officers. Currently, there's numerous different officers that work at North Point. So Kim had approached me and said, look, we're really interested in one officer. Of course, we can't do that. So that's why the, the request was brought forward for this year, to do a shared officer between North Point and the town of Waxall. So what it would be, would be 35 weeks, the officers, officer would work at North Point. And for the 17 weeks they're not at North Point, they would be working for the town of Waxall, for the police department, doing community policing. So they'd work events, they'd work the trails, the parks, and the downtown area, just like our community guys do. I think it's a, a very good thing for the town of Waxall in that during the summertime and during the, the weeks that they are off for spring break and fall break, that's primarily the busy times for the parks, for the trails, and for the downtown area. So we'd be able to, we would be able to put an extra officer in those areas during those busiest times. So that shared cost would be, like I say, 35 weeks for, for North Point, 17 weeks for us. So they would pay salaries and benefits, as well as vehicle maintenance and uniforms and equipment for their time. They would have the officer, and we would pay for the other time. So that breakdown would be $66,428 for North Point, $36,025 for the town of Waxall. Is there any questions?
Is the officer that you would be proposing for this already trained as an SRO? Or is there a training cost?
Yes, there, there are a training class. We currently have an officer that I think Kim can tell you more. I think she's got one officer in mind that has worked quite a bit at off-duty at North Point already, and has already started to foster those relationships between him and the students, as well as the teachers and the parents. That officer already is trained. He would have to go through DARE training for that program. If we couldn't get him into the DARE program before the school year started, then we could have one of the other two officers that currently do it at Waxell Elementary or Kensington cover for the DARE classes, and that officer would have to go over and cover their school while they were teaching DARE.
And so the shared expense, would that be, obviously, is it an upfront contribution from North Point?
So it would, it would more than likely be monthly, sorry?
From the, the, the accounting side, we, we would need to budget for the, the full position. And then what we would do is we would bill North Point. And we can arrange how that could be. As Chief said, we can do that monthly. We could theoretically do really any other type that would be good, reasonable for North Point to do. The main thing being on the accounting side is we would need to budget for the full, full position, full with salaries and benefits. And then they would pay for the roughly two-thirds cost of their time that they'd be utilizing that officer.
And is this revisited yearly, or how does that work? Or is it?
Yes, we would need to revisit it yearly. We would need to make sure we're estimating what those costs would be. I mean, the salary and, and, and other usage things are pretty easy to estimate. There's always other things that come up that could be different every year, and we can, of course, the salaries are going to go up every single year, among other costs. So that would be readjusted every single year that we would continue to do this. And I would recommend that if you move forward with that, it would be through some type of an agreement. If we get the, that direction from the board to proceed forward, and we would produce that, and then we could make that as a formal agreement between the town and North Point to make sure that they are reimbursing those costs to us through that agreement.
And if for some reason the officer is sick or can't be there, then do we need to provide coverage?
We achieve a question.
Yes, that's correct. So if, if that officer's out for schools, if the officer's sick or on vacation, I would have to provide coverage for that officer.
Do we have trained SROs easily available, that kind of thing?
We do not. So with the state, the way it works, is if the officer's going to be in there for over a certain period of time, they would have to be trained as an SRO. If they're, if it's under that period of time, say, two weeks, they wouldn't have to be trained or go through the SRO school. But I, I do currently have our animal control, he's trained with SRO, and he's the one that covers currently. Him and Lieutenant Zill cover for Kensington and Waxell Elementary, the ones we use now.
Question for Jeff. I noticed in the Rotary Letter that they sent, they said, we know that the town of Waxall does not donate to nonprofits. So would this violate our policy of not donating to nonprofits? Do we have a policy that saves that?
We would not be doing a donation. I mean, they, we would go under an agreement, and then they would reimburse us the cost for providing that service. So it would not be a donation.
So it's more of a contract service than a donation?
That's correct.
Question I had, how many other private schools are in the town of Waxall that, that could potentially make the same request?
Currently, they're the only private school we have in Waxall.
I'm not familiar with another private school in the town limits.
Just want to make sure we're not opening Pandora's box.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing about the worthiness of any of this, or of North Point itself, but kind of a little uncomfortable with favoring one particular nonprofit with pub, public money.
Okay, how does the rest of the group feel?
They're, they're paying for it, right? For the amount of time
Yes.
Using the officer?
Yes, that's correct.
And Chief, didn't you have, when you made the presentation at the beginning of the year, did you already, you counted for at least, I think, one or two officers?
What's that? I'm sorry?
There, in your, in the, when we did the retreat at the beginning of the year, you had suggested we would need one or two officers anyway throughout the, throughout the year.
Correct.
I mean, this, this could potentially help with that, too.
Right, it would help for summertime and the two breaks. So it's, and it's not a donation to a nonprofit? So they would pay for their time that they have that officer. We're paying, the, the town of Waxall is paying for that officer for the time that they would work under the police department for the town, where they would work community policing.
Because that's a third of, basically, of
Correct, correct.
So this would be in addition to the other two officers that we've already budgeted for?
That's correct.
But those officers are only part-time, correct?
That's correct. They would work every other weekend, opposite shifts of each other, so that I would have every weekend, every Friday and Saturday, Sunday covered for the parks, trails, and downtown.
But this officer would be more or less part-time, too, because they would only be working during the summers and their off time?
Correct. And I, I could put them working a Monday-through-Friday shift, so then I would have every day covered for summertime for the parks, trails, and downtown.
So in thinking about this, I spoke with some people who have worked as SROs, and they said that sometimes school administrators don't understand what is required for them to do their job to secure the school, and they sort of get treated like an extra body to do whatever. And that SROs need a dedicated workstation at the school and things like that. I'm just wondering what your thoughts are about that?
And that's, that's something that I just spoke with Kim Maslin about a couple of weeks ago, was having a dedicated officer, office for that officer, because it's more than just walking around a school. So she's agreed that 100%, they need a, their own workspace. So I think that answers, you know, how she feels about whether they need the workspace or not. Anything else?
Do you feel that the summer is an optimal time for Waxall to have an extra officer?
I do, yes. So with, with school being out for summer, there's a lot more people out on the, in the parks, on the trails, and in the downtown area. The weekends and summertime are, it gets pretty busy.
Okay. So we can let that stew for a few, and we can continue.
I did have just one more comment. As I was researching this, I, I did learn that Indian Trail were asked by the Trelaina Christian Academy for the same sort of thing, and they didn't go along with that. And they actually, as a general policy, not going to fund SROs in private schools. So that's just something I learned.
Okay. So next, we have a request from the Rotary Club. And so that is for a $1,500 contract request. And I, I think some of you are familiar with what they handle during Memorial Day, Fourth of July, 9/11, as well as Veterans Day. They, when all those flags go up and come down, they, they manage that regularly and have for a number of years, as you saw in that letter. They are looking to go into an agreement, i.e. so it's not a, not a donation, to be able to help continue that, that function. And so their request is for the town to consider going into a, a contract with them to provide that service for $1,500. I did mention this to the mayor at one of our breakfasts, that this would be becoming, because this was the first one that came our way roughly a month, month and a half ago. We battered around some, some thoughts and ideas. One idea that was battered around was the Downtown Waxall Association fitting half of that cost. And I personally think that's a fine idea. And we, we brought that up with our Business Development Director, who also is a staff support to that association, and she thinks that has merit. That's something that we can discuss at our upcoming DWA meeting this coming Monday as an agenda item pending the thoughts of this, this board. But it looks like that the, that their budget can, can fit that. And then, of course, we could, we could find those, those very small means to fill in that other gap. And so that's, that's the initial thought there of how we could, how we could move forward with that.
I know it's a very small dollar amount in the big scheme of things, but what I, what I'm concerned about is, is starting these types of contracts with organizations when, you know, we have a, a large staff that, you know, Parks and Rec, Public Services. Do we need to be paying other organizations to do things like this? When, I mean, I, I believe that organizations started it up as because they are kind of a volunteer, a community service type of organization, and now all of a sudden we're paying them to do things like this? So that's just a thought, even though it's a very small amount. I just don't want to open that door. And, and when Commissioner Don mentioned the thing about giving money to nonprofits, you know, years ago, the town did do that, give money to certain nonprofits. I think it was Humane Society, Turning Point, things like that. And I think it was my first year on the board, we decided not to do that anymore. And I'm just wondering if we're now starting to open up that door again to do things like that, but just a thought.
Yeah, maybe it would be better just for the town to contribute some muscle power to doing this type of thing rather than money, right?
I mean, I don't know what Dina or Todd would think of that, but I just, that was what the reasoning for this to begin with, is what they were doing this more of as a volunteer community service type of thing, so.
And I, I don't know what, what time they invest into doing that, so I don't know the measure, measure of that.
Because this cost is mainly the cost of the flags themselves, isn't it?
Well, yes. I mean, that, that is the, the cost. I mean, the other is just the volunteers that, that, but then if you move that to, say, a, a town function, then there's the cost of, of our own staff doing that, and then versus the other things that they have to do.
I think we would all agree that, that this memorial is a centerpiece of the town. It's a centerpiece of the downtown in particular. So, you know, in, in light of how a lot of these types of memorials are cared for and maintained, I think it would make sense if it was moved into Parks and Rec. And it just becomes a duty of Parks and Rec to take care of and tend to these flags. So the Rotary doesn't have to worry about it. The town can take care of it.
Well, we can certainly get with the Rotary Club and see what their resource allocation is into that. I think we'd have to dive into that more before being willing to accept that. And I sense Dina's presence behind me.
Dina seems to have something on her mind.
Yes, come on up, Dina.
I'm just curious on exactly the, the mechanics of what's going on. Is it just the purchasing of flags? I mean, I know we're paying for the lighting and whatnot, but are we talking about flag purchasing and hanging and sort of raising and such?
So this just started a couple of years ago, with the Rotary came to us and asked to do this, this service for the town to add flags when we have military service or the Fourth of July. And in the beginning, they were using it as a fundraising effort to do this service. The time, I already spend time with them, preparing the site for them. And also, there's like these little plugs that y'all don't see in the ground, where the flag actually sits in. We have to do maintenance and make sure that, when they can find them, when they come back. And so we already spend time with them, on partnering with them on this. To add a service that wasn't like programmed into what our normal daily duties are for just regular, and then for Park and Rec for events, that would be challenging to add that on to that, just to give you all a heads up.
Because these, these flag raisings, as we're talking about, they're generally occurring along with other, other town events?
They're, because they're partnering with us.
Correct. They're helping us do this one event that, on a day when we have a lot of other events, end of the words. Like Memorial Day. There's more than one thing going on Memorial Day and Fourth of July, for instance. So I appreciate that Parks and Rec might be busy and tied up with other things already. So getting Rotary's help is definitely beneficial from that standpoint.
Yes. And they, they started the program with a partnership with us. So this wasn't seeked out from the town in the beginning. So this is their initiatives in the beginning. You have questions?
Dina, you, I mean, you have a miscellaneous expense line item in your budget. It's already got $900 on it. I mean, we're, we're talking about $1,500. I mean, couldn't, couldn't we just simply increase that line item and you manage it?
Well, could you partner with the DWA?
Yes. So the partnership, that's not a problem. I, I heard y'all wanted us to put the flags up every time we have it in a military event. And I'm not sure we can handle that. So maybe I misheard.
No, and I think what I was getting at was the actual cost of this. So the people power, we can borrow Rotary. I mean, I, I think it's a great activity for them to continue to do if they wish to continue to do it. But in terms of actually, okay, are we just talking about buying flags and maintaining flag poles and things like that? So.
It looks like they want the $1,500 for people power and the flags.
That's what I'm wondering.
That's, that's, that has to be.
I don't understand why.
$100 for flags.
Exactly. I'm not understanding why we're paying for people. Sorry, Todd wants to speak.
So when they first started, they would have a sponsor. They'd pay $50 to a flag. And they would sponsor, put their name in front of the flag. That's how I'll just got started. And it came through Kurt White, our downtown manager. He wanted to know if I could help him with it. So I said, yeah. Why didn't know it was gonna be every event thing. But we go out and mark all the holes for them. And they get a sponsor, like you might have a military dad, they charge you $50 for that flag and they stick it up for you. And they put their name tag on it. Well, they started to get people that sell houses sponsoring them, just all kinds of sponsors. So I don't know where this is coming from, because they get donations to put these up. We find them for them. We had to paint them and we got nailed beside each one. We can find them with a metal detector. So we go out and spend a lot of time finding them. And it takes them maybe 30 minutes to put them up.
Yeah. And we're finding them regardless?
Yeah, we find them either way.
But we're partnering with them.
Yeah.
Yeah. And had been from day one.
Yeah.
But it all started out where they would get $50 for a sponsor, to sponsor like if one of my sons wanted to be, if I wanted to sponsor one of them on a flag for a veteran or a dad or any of them, it'd cost you $50 and they'd come up and.
So in essence, we don't know why this request for $1,500 is here.
No. I mean, I don't. Because we do most of the work.
Understood. Thank you, Todd.
We find stuff. We find.
And you have the, in your packet, you have the request. And what I could suggest is that if they want to see this potentially fulfilled, then they can come to the public hearing and make that.
State their case.
State their case. It is not an amount that would require us to do some kind of extensive number changes and affect a whole lot of things. So I think if, if that managed to make its way through, that's a minimal adjustment between the public hearing and then the final, final decision.
It sounds like there just needs to be a better understanding of what the funds are actually for.
Well, I think, I mean, it seems like they want us to make a donation to the charity, but they know we don't allow that. So now they're coming, doing a roundabout way of asking for the donation.
And like you said, it's not the money, because it's such a small amount of money. It's more like the principle, right?
It's the precedent.
All right. Very good. Last but not least is if you recall at your retreat, there was some discussion about starting a park property acquisition fund. So in going through our revenues, we would be able to start this fund how things are currently constructed, only if we did a transfer from fund balance. And so if this is something that is still a priority of the board to start this fund, then that's where we would need to do that from. And so I wanted to see what your feeling was about that. If you wanted to contribute some type of amount to start that fund. And then of course, every year after that, very similar to the pedestrian connectivity fund, you would, the idea was to build on that fund just to have a rainy day fund in case there was an opportunity, that a piece of land came up that would be within that, within that price range to, to acquire. So I was not able to fulfill that without dipping into fund balance. So that is the direction I'm seeing.
So this fund is to acquire more land?
Yes.
Not to go towards land you may already have for development?
That's correct. That's how I understood it. Now, keep in mind, if we had the opportunity to purchase land, we can always just take that from fund balance at the time when that consideration comes up, whenever that may be. We have the ability to do that. And we have done that before. Thoughts?
So this is a fund just for purchasing parkland. That's basically what we're saying.
Yes. Yes. So this was a directive from the retreat is to consider a fund where we would put monies in there for park property acquisitions.
Like park fee and lieu? Is this like the park fee and lieu money and?
You could, you, you could put park fee and lieu money in there. And that's really where the genesis of this was, is that we had a line item for receiving park fee and lieu money. Of course, we have not received any yet. But then the discussion expanded to, well, why don't we consider starting a fund where we go ahead and make contributions to that?
I mean, I, I, I agree that the, if we're specifically, I mean, that's something that we've been selling to the citizens when on these developments, we're collecting park fee and lieu. And so I think we need to make sure it goes into a fund where it's used just for that. So if that's what this is, then I'm.
That's different.
But you're saying this is different.
Well, that's what this could also be used for.
But that's not what it says.
You, you could use it for that. I mean, you could, if you use it for that, you're basically starting a fund with zero money in it though, because there's been no fee and lieu contribution.
Okay. Okay. This says acquisition. Acquisition is purchase. That's not fee and lieu. So.
It is, it is different.
The fee and lieu funds would go into that.
Yes. But you could put your fee and lieu monies into that.
Right.
Once they're received. But right now, that would be received in a different lineup.
But that's not what this says. This says acquisition.
That's correct.
Acquisition fund. But if you want it to be park fee and lieu, then it would have to say that, because then this appears to mean that this is park property acquisition for the purchase thereof, not to receive funds from a developer for something that they in fact may build. And when you started this conversation, it wasn't in that tone of really that, but you could take money from the general fund to then put in this fund for the purchase of property, if I understood you correctly.
Yes, that is correct.
Which is different.
Well, the question is where does park fee and lieu money go?
Park?
General fund?
Yes, it's in a different fund.
But, but the park fee and lieu money goes into the general fund?
No, it would go into your capital.
Capital reserve?
Yes.
So what's the difference between putting fee and lieu in the capital reserve versus putting it in a park property acquisition?
Because that doesn't say park fee and lieu. It says acquisition.
Well, I'm saying, my point is, is that park fee and lieu is just another income source that could be put into this fund.
But the wording then would have to be changed from acquisition.
Why?
Well, not necessarily.
The savings account is to buy land.
Yes.
And the fee and lieu is to buy park and develop park.
Okay, understand that.
Yeah.
But when he started, and I'm, I'm sorry to keep saying he, when Jeff started the conversation, Jeff made mention that money, since there's no money in this fund, could come from the general fund to purchase property. Did I not hear that?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's different in purchasing property than to receive funds for a park fee and lieu from a developer. So I think that if you're going to state what this fund is for, the fund needs to be accurately described in a description so that there is no miscommunication and that it is clear and transparent. So all who are looking at it and once you see it not just today, but next year or the year after, you understand what those funds and the intention of those funds is for.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Yeah. And I agree. I mean, we have the pedestrian connectivity fund specific for that purpose, just like the, the vehicle fee goes into our, a specific fund for that purpose. And I do think that we need to have a special fund for the parks. But when we talk about land acquisition, what if we want to purchase land for something other than a park? So.
You would be able to do that through your unassigned fund balance.
Just do that. Okay. Okay. So if you're purchasing funds, purchasing land for a park, and you can do that through the assigned fund balance, then why would this say park property acquisition?
Well, that was what was discussed at the retreat.
Okay. Then that, that's gonna need to be reworded.
The goal here was to create a bank account. The goal here was to create a pot of money that you could use to then buy a park. And the understanding is that park fee and lieu money that then goes into the general fund could easily be put into a fund like this, or you can pull general funds and put it into a fund like this, so that you have a pile of money that's specific to the purpose of buying parkland.
Buying parkland?
Correct.
Not parkland money that's received from a developer who is now contributing for maybe land we already have. I mean, I'm just saying clarification purposes, maybe I'm being a stickler for this, but I think it needs to be clear.
I, I think your, I think your, your clarity is about the source of the funds and not the pile.
It needs to be clear about the source, because if you're not clear about the source and where it's coming from or what you're using it for, then it can be used for something else, because somebody might say, maybe you meant this, or maybe you meant that. But if you want to be clear about what you're doing, then you need to be clear in the description of what the funds are gonna be used for and how you're gonna get them.
And I think that's great to add that here, but the point is that this didn't specifically have to be just the park fee and lieu money. It could be monies from the general fund. It could be money someone says, hey, I want to give the town some money for parks. Oh, great. We've got a fund for that. So the monies don't have to come from a specific source. Park fee and lieu is just one of these sources of monies that could go into this.
So this is gonna be used all park fee and lieu? If the developer wants to contribute money for a park, or we want to now, as you just said, take money from our general fund. If you can take money from the general fund initially to be used for a park, then why do we need another fund to, to use for a park if you've already got the general fund?
We could just make it easier and just leave it to the fee and lieu and not take anything from the general fund.
But Jeff just mentioned to take money from the general fund, because this, because to put into here, but we, we can use the money already for the general fund, then why do we need another fund if we can use that already for the parks?
The idea was to create a pile of money over time.
So if we refer to your budget document on page 62, Capital Improvement Plan Fund 403, there is a line item there for fee and lieu revenue. It is blank. But that is where if we did receive a fee and lieu, that's where it would go, ultimately going into your capital reserve. Now, what is done with it beyond that will be at the discretion of the board. So it's, it's up to the board as to how you would like that to be appropriated. It could be appropriated to existing projects. That could be appropriated to new projects. All kinds of different ways. The statute is somewhat broad, that it has to be utilized somewhere in the area or something like that. I don't know what the exact wording is, so that can be broadly interpreted. Now, my recommendation would be is to keep the fee and lieu revenue within the Capital Improvement Plan 403 for receiving it. And then have a separate fund for property acquisition, if we want to have a savings fund for that. If we have the luxury of having a lot of fee and lieu money, and we want to at some point utilize some of that for park acquisition, then we can certainly discuss then whether we'd want to move some of that money into that fund for that. Or if we want to have the fee and lieu or some portion thereof utilized for an improvement on an existing facility, we can do that from the Capital Improvement Plan Fund as well.
I think I'm more comfortable leaving it to use with what we've got, rather than to purchase at this time.
Because we already have a line item to be able to do that, correct?
That's correct.
That's a line item to receive the fee and lieu money.
Yes.
Correct. That's receiving the money. That doesn't necessarily dictate where the money goes.
So once we receive it, you then have the ability to transfer and put it someplace for the purchase thereof or the use of property already.
That's correct.
Then why would we have this?
The main reason to have this is to show the public that you dedicated a certain amount of money specifically for the purpose of acquiring park land.
But we already have a line item where we can.
We have a general fund. That line item says receiving. It doesn't say spending.
Well, from my understanding was as this was a specific fund for the acquisition of land, the fee and lieu is, is not that.
But the fee and lieu can be transferred to a fee and lieu, right?
Yes, it could.
If you had money for that.
Yes.
It could be.
Could just wait to get some fee and lieu money and then just decide at that point.
That might be the better approach at this point.
I've heard some might be coming at some point, so let's just.
If, if the board feels this line item is.
Fasten our seat belts and take the adventure.
I want everyone to hear that I say I agree with Sue.
I love that. Look at that. Oh, my goodness. This is amazing.
Hug it out. Hug it out. Come on.
I want everybody to hear that.
So you're saying I've got a chance.
And I'll just make it clear, if the board doesn't feel this line item is necessary, then we don't have to have it. It's simply a method of making it clear to the public that we're dedicating funds for parks and park acquisition mainly. But if we feel there's already a good place for that, if we feel comfortable in that spot, fine. So be it.
Everybody okay with that? Okay. So we got that one. We will scratch through that one. We will revisit the Rotary Club one if they wish to. If they don't, then we'll just assume it not to be. How about that? And so that leaves us with North Point. You wanna hash that one out or carry on to the end?
I'm fine in investing the funds for an extra officer for North Point. We only have one school. That doesn't seem like a lot. On the upside, we do get another officer that's largely paid for, that we can utilize for summer months. So it's, it's kinda like getting a full-time officer for the price of a part-time officer.
So what if you get another school?
That's a good question.
Or another 10th school?
That's a good question.
And you've already set precedent by this one school.
And that's why it's important that this be a contract that we can look at it. Because I think the point you bring is a very valid point. And it's a very big concern if we end up with a whole bunch of private schools that have 200 to 300 students.
What if you get another private organization that might need assistance or something? Or need someone to watch their building? Or we blow in a contract with them too?
Something we'd have to take up at that time.
But this again, it's a precedent.
It's a precedent, but again, because we're looking at it every year, we can decide every year on it. That's just my recommendation, so.
I guess for me, the question is, would we be hiring another part-time officer? Or is this, we're just getting a great benefit out of doing this based on this request? But did we?
You get a reduced rate on that officer?
You're essentially, you're hiring another officer and then that officer will be North Point SRO for roughly two-thirds of the time, and then the community police officer for the town for the other third of the time.
I guess it's sort of like hiring a third of an officer.
I guess it's sort of like hiring a third of an officer instead of a whole officer.
That's kinda how I'm looking at it.
That, that's correct, but again, on the accounting side, we have to account for the full cost and then we'll get that reimbursed. So i- in essence, if you said, yes, do this, your, your next budget document, you will see that increase to the revenues and the expenditure.
And I guess the question would also be, can the officer be utilized on patrol? Or does it have to be community policing downtown only?
That would be a question for Chief.
So the Waxaw Police Department would utilize the officer where they saw fit, anytime that they have downtime from the school. So it doesn't have to be parks, trails, and downtown. More than likely, that's what it would be unless we had an officer that was in school or on vacation who was on patrol and we had to have that extra coverage.
The, the other part of it too is that puts this officer kind of in play, if you will, out in the field if called upon for other larger calls. So if there was a big call, for instance, at either of the schools, east and west of this location, that officer could be pulled if necessary, if, if such a call was made.
Could be, but if there was another situation at another school, we probably wouldn't pull the school resource officer.
They'd be your last resource.
But in case that incident was spilled over to another school.
Understood.
And then I guess the officer we're hiring, is that an officer that would be a lateral with experience, or are we losing now a seasoned officer?
So the, the officer that North Point wants is a seasoned officer. He was a retiree out of Lancaster County. Uh, he's been with us for quite a few years, probably six years now. Uh, and that's their choice for what they want.
So are we getting, somebody trained already?
We, we have, we have one person in mind who is currently in basic law enforcement training, uh, used to work for Union County Sheriff's Office, uh, in the jail capacity, uh, never worked on the road. So we would be getting more than likely a brand-new rookie officer.
So now the officer, the officer that you're, that they're looking at is somebody who's retired from Lancaster?
Correct.
And this officer that you're talking about that worked in the jails is somebody that you've worked with or that you're looking at?
That we're looking at to hire, correct?
Oh, to hire. This is one of the other two officers that you're hiring or the one officer?
No, he would be the replacement for the officer going to work at North Point.
Oh, okay, so. So the one that they, they want at North Point, we are currently using in what capacity? Is he patrol? Is he community officer? What is he?
He's patrol.
He's patrol, so.
Yeah, I kind of have the same. I, I agree with Hugh Protem McMillan.
Okay, disagreement today. Did you, did you hear that? Did you hear that? Okay, just, just wanna make sure.
Anything else?
I mean, none of this concerns you, uh, Chief? I mean, having a, you know, exchanging, I, I guess, cause what I think I'm hearing is there, there might be some concerns from the board with a, um, senior officer being an SRO and a new officer coming in. But obviously you're, you're in charge. I mean, is it something that concerns you or is it not really?
That.
Not really.
Not at all.
I mean, I, I think there's some...
I, I've been here seventeen, I've gone on eighteen years, and during that time, I've seen the turnover of this police department probably twelve-fold. So it, it happens all the time. It's a vicious cycle of they come, they stay two or three years, they leave. So I, I've seen it over and over. Uh, I think North Point wanting the seasoned officer, this officer is, I'm not gonna say he's not a go-getter, because he's, he's very good at his job. He's very good at community policing. He's very good at talking with the community, uh, very good at everything he does. Uh, as for writing a bunch of tickets and, you know, stuff like that, he, he just, he would rather do community-oriented. And I think that's really why North Point wants him so bad, is because he's able to develop those relationships between him and those students. He has younger kids, uh, he understands their thought process, all that kinda stuff. And he's, he's already dove in, uh, working there as an off-duty capacity. He's already developed those relationships with the kids, with the parents, as well as the teachers, to where he knows most of the kids' names, and there's two hundred and some odd kids. Uh, he knows the parents. Uh, he's got to know the teachers very well. They all like him at the school, and that's why they want him, is because of his personality and able to speak with the kids, the parents, and the teachers.
So he's okay with this?
I understand why.
He's okay with then switching to that?
He came to me and asked if, if, if we got this position, could he put in for it?
Okay.
I mean, there is value in building those relationships, because they will remember those relationships, and these kids are going to be in our communities, and you want them to have a go-to person like the other SROs to go to as they get older. So there is value in that, so I don't want to minimize that.
Absolutely. And that's something Kim came to me with last year, the same exact thing, was I want one officer, and the reason why was to develop those relationships. So I know, we were speaking earlier about the DARE program, and I, I didn't used to support the DARE program, because I was like, well, DARE, you're gonna teach them something in fifth grade. They're not gonna remember that in junior high or senior high or even in college. They're gonna kinda forget about that stuff, and they're gonna do what they wanna do. But that's really not true. And I realized that over time, as I saw Vic Montalvo making the relationships with those fifth graders. And those relationships go well beyond DARE. It takes those kids through middle school, high school, and even college, where Vic Montalvo still has relationships with those kids. And I hate to say that an SRO is gonna have better relationships with troubled kids than he is with non-troubled kids, but that's the facts. Because he's gonna give more attention to the troubled kids. He's gonna give more attention to those kids who he thinks need more guidance. So he's followed those kids through middle school, high school, and college to make sure that they're still on the right path. So DARE is the pathway, not only to just stay off drugs and alcohol and, and other substances, but it's the pathway to a better life in the future. So I agree with, with Ms. Baslin in the fact that DARE is a great program. I agree that having one SRO in a school is way better than having five different officers on five different days of the week. It just doesn't make sense, because those officers aren't gonna develop relationships with those kids if they don't wanna be there. They're there for money. They're there for off-duty work, rather than being there for the passion of being there for the, for the kids, for the parents, and the teachers.
You know, Chief, I think there's a, my personal opinion is I think there's a value there that we're not able to quantify in the budget. There's a value there to the community.
Absolutely.
That, um, that I, personally, I think is important. And I, I, it sounds like the, I mean, the school is meeting to, willing to meet us two-thirds of the way, I guess I should say, uh, for this officer, so.
And I think the big thing is they're, they're paying for it. They're, they're paying for that officer to be there. Yes, we're paying a third of that cost for the time that we have that officer, that we're utilizing the officer. So they're, they're paying to have an officer.
I don't think we disagree in the value of the DARE program or even the officer being in the school.
Right.
But does that transition over to that officer being able to be not just a value to that school, but would it be a value to the town of Waxaw for the time that that officer would be working here?
In my opinion, absolutely. I, I actually wanted more community officers in this year's budget, but we do have constraints, and I realize that. So we dropped back to two part-time to cover the weekends. But the summertime, you gotta look at how many people are out and about in this town during the summer. I think it's gonna be a very big benefit. I think we've already seen the benefit to the, the one part-time officer I've got out there now with publicity that has, is everywhere about how, how safe they are on the trails, because they see that officer on that bicycle riding those trails. They see that officer in the park handing out stickers to kids and talking to the parents, and they see that officer walking downtown. I don't know of any other, you know, smaller towns that have that and have the, the ability to feel safe in all those aspects.
Anything else?
Okay, so the big question is, what's the direction?
Do we want an official vote on this then, or?
I, I, if it has to come to that, then I guess so be it, but I, we, we need direction as to how to prepare the final budget.
I mean, do we need to decide right now? We've got like a month before the public hearing, and then another month before we actually vote on the budget, right?
Well, what we could do is we could program it in, and then we can make sure that that is a featured part of our public hearing when it comes up, and just, uh, see what the, if there's any comments or response from the public then, and that can help with your, um, decision-making.
It sounds like that's the direction we need to go with this particular item. So let's do it that way.
Okay. All right. So then that would mean that, uh, revenues would go up. We'd put in the expected revenues of two-thirds of that cost for the position, and then we'll cover the others, um, update the budget in that way. All right. We'll go on to some easier subjects now, I hope. Uh, special revenue funds. So this year, that budget is hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, three of them are police-related. You have the police explorers, which is recommended at five thousand dollars, as well as the police state drug and the police federal drug budgets. The state drug budget would be six thousand dollars, and then the police federal drug budget would be sixty-seven thousand. So the, the thing of note there is that a, a police vehicle would be acquired out of those funds, and then that, that's a portion of funds that are distributed back to us when our police department makes, uh, uh, drug, drug seizures. Uh, the cemetery fund is, uh, the fund for South Side Cemetery, the operation of, of that. Uh, people, uh, come there regularly, uh, looking for a, a burial plot and, uh, a, a great ideas we talked about at the, uh, the budget that our Public Services Director, Todd Matthews, had is, is hey, we have, uh, some space for columbariums, and we identified it, identified a area where that would make sense to locate one. And actually, if this becomes a, a successful thing, we would have opportunity to grow it, but we wanted to start with one. Uh, and that would hold, uh, forty-eight niches total. Uh, and that proposed cost is a little over forty thousand dollars to, uh, build that. And of course, you'll see in the fee schedule, uh, uh, a little bit what the cost would be, uh, based on, uh, where the row that you're on for the, uh, for the columbarium, with the idea that being up a little bit higher is worth a little bit more than, uh, being lower. But Todd will go over that here, um, here shortly. But that's included, uh, in this budget to, uh, to accomplish that project. And you see a concept of what that would look like there in its planned location within the South Side Cemetery. Now, moving on to my favorite part, the Capital Improvement Plan. So, uh, just as a reminder, this is our five-year plan. Uh, that's typical in most local governments. Uh, they can range anywhere from four to ten years, but most utilize a five-year plan, and Waxaw is no different. It identifies large-scale projects and equipment purchases, provides a schedule for planning and completion of the projects, and of course, most importantly, identifies funding options for that. So you see up there on the screen, the twenty-eight different projects that we have accomplished so far within the three years that we've had the program in place. So that, I think that's something that we all can be very proud of. So the benefits, very self-explanatory here, I think. It synchronizes project planning with your budget, links the town's plans with its physical capacity. Most importantly, it informs the public on our investments in infrastructure and equipment, et cetera. But of course, we'll go over what those, uh, what those proposed investments are in this upcoming budget, uh, momentarily. But your total budget's four million, five hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. It includes eight project funds this year. Uh, some of them look very familiar. Couple of them will be new. The pedestrian connectivity fund, the Powell Bill Fund, small transportation, Capital Improvement Plan, Kensington Drive. Uh, they are all ones you've seen before. The Rec Center, Safety Action Plan Grant, and Bulletproof Vest Funds are new, and we'll go over those momentarily. And just as an FYI, you currently have in your capital reserve a little over seven point three million dollars. So your funds, first one, pedestrian connectivity fund. This is the fund utilized to reserve for greenways and sidewalks. It was established last year, and we'd be contributing another hundred thousand to that. Um, so that, that is that fund. The second fund is the Recreation Center Fund. That's four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So that is a fund that's created to utilize the state appropriation money that we received. Uh, so that will pay, uh, for the, for the debt of that. And so that will be in place this year. It will also, uh, be in place, uh, next year as well, to a, a certain point. After that point, then we will have to pay that off because of the restraints of the, uh, of the state appropriation money. But, uh, this was beneficial at the time for the town to, uh, acquire the, uh, the asset that way and keep our cash position high. It's benefited us with our interest on our investments. It was also beneficial for the property owner at the time. And so, uh, we'll establish a fund to pay down that debt, uh, through the CIP in this fashion. Powell Bill Projects. So if you recall, at the retreat, we made a, uh, we made a directive that we would invest five hundred thousand into the ongoing maintenance of our streets. So that's what is included in, as part of this six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. It is the five hundred thousand. What we found, uh, to our delight, was that our streets were in good condition, and we wanna make sure that they stay that way to the best of our ability. And so that's why we're putting that half a million dollar investment into the maintenance of our streets. The rest of the money is for sidewalk maintenance, and then also, this will be year two of our tree maintenance program that we started, uh, last year. Uh, Millbridge was the primary zone where a lot of, uh, tree trimming was done this past year. We'll move on to the next zone, uh, with the idea that we will circle back around every five years and make sure that, uh, all street, uh, street trees are cared for in some shape or fashion at least once every five years, if not sooner. Small Transportation Plan. So this is, as Melody, uh, mentioned before, this is the twenty-five dollar charge that is on your vehicle registration. So these are the types of projects that that goes towards. And this year, the two projects that we have proposed are traffic signal projects. Both, uh, we did studies, and then they warranted the, uh, insertion of traffic signals at each of these locations, specifically Kensington Road and Millbridge Parkway, and then Cutherson Road and Lawson Drive. Uh, this, with the DOT process, is a multi-year process, unfortunately, uh, not as extensive as some of our other projects, but we're looking at this, uh, probably transcending into the next budget year before it would go under construction. So we're proposing that the design and right-of-way acquisition be funded out of this year's state transportation or small transportation plan, uh, dollars, and estimating those at fifty grand each. So you'd still have two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we would just, uh, not utilize in this budget. We just reserve that for the next year and apply that towards the, uh, construction cost of these two projects and then other projects that we have proposed in the, uh, in the five-year plan. So next, we have the Safety Action Plan Grant Fund, better known as SS4A. It's a program to, uh, designed to improve... It's a program to, uh, designed to improve roadway safety. It will create a plan that supports future grant funding opportunities. So the, uh, the, uh, the grant would be for eighty percent of that hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but it is reimbursement. So we have to budget that full amount and then we'll get eighty percent of that reimbursed back to us. Uh, the bulletproof vest fund works very similarly, it's just the percentages, uh, differently. We received a grant that will reimburse us for a portion of those costs. We will, uh, get back ten thousand, uh, six hundred dollars, uh, for, for that grant. Two other larger projects that we have, the Waxaw Learning Center, five hundred thousand dollar proposed, uh, project. Sure everybody here knows that the, uh, the new library is open. They've been in operation there now for, uh, a couple of weeks now. And, uh, the county is in the process of moving out of the old location permanently, which is expected to be, uh, later this summer. And then we'll be able to, uh, start the process of, uh, transitioning this to a, uh, a new use for the town. Uh, have computers there for the public to utilize like it has, uh, in the past there when it was the Waxaw Library, as well as new meeting and programming space. Downtown master plan at a hundred and twenty thousand, uh, dollars. This is a, uh, plan that will be a guiding policy document for the town. It will provide a vision for the future of downtown and, uh, how we implement that plan with the estimate being a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now, capital vehicles and capital equipment. We are proposing purchasing capital vehicles this year. That would be four police vehicles plus, uh, the cost to equip those vehicles. As well as, uh, two new vehicles for our facilities management. And then, uh, one vehicle for our public service staff. And that proposal is for four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred, uh, four hundred dollars. Uh, handheld radios, so, uh, that would be a hundred and five thousand dollars. We have, uh, older technology there and, uh, we're, we're trying to get out of the stone age with our, uh, handheld radios that we have. Um, I believe that's for, uh, around twenty new, uh, handheld radios, if I remember correctly. That's proposed at a hundred and five thousand dollars. Capital equipment, so these are other smaller, uh, equipment, uh, purchases. A small shed for public services that would be housed on the back of the, uh, town campus property, as well as a, uh, new computer for vehicle inspections. For emergency, uh, management, it would be a drone as well as AEDs, new AEDs at all of our, uh, uh, locations within town. And, and get those, uh, uh, up to date in good compliance. Parks and Rec, there'd be, uh, a few, uh, things for Nesbit Park, fence toppers, as well as some new bleachers. Screening for the baseball fields, then a couple of items at the rec barn, furniture, as well as fitness equipment. And then also a dump trailer, that is one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So, the, um, the vehicles, we are looking to, uh, purchase those instead of leasing those. Reason why is we've now been with, um, um, Enterprise now for a, a few years. And we do have a number of leased vehicles through them that we will continue to do. Uh, however, our staff has been unhappy with the, uh, customer service they provided. And then the lead time that it's taken to, uh, receive these vehicles in most cases has been well over a year. And, uh, they've expressed to me that it is not meeting their needs and I agree with that. And so, uh, we, I have informed Enterprise that, you know, I'll let them know for sure after we get through this, uh, budget workshop about what our intent is. Of course, you know, they've been very apologetic about that and, uh, assure me that the lead times and things like that are better now than they used to be. But, uh, I think that we need to continue on and go back right now to, uh, purchasing our own vehicles, which we can afford to do. Uh, had them do their homework on that and, uh, they can procure these vehicles, uh, a lot quicker. Now, you're talking about, uh, just a matter of, uh, a third of the time or less as to what it was taking to get them from, um, from Enterprise. Some of that was not under their control, but, uh, it's, it's not, it, it's just not. I think we've given it enough time to improve and it just hasn't to our satisfaction. So that's an explanation on, um, on that. Next, you've seen this one before, Kensington Drive. Uh, that project has been delayed a little bit just from extended time for right-of-way acquisition. Uh, but we feel like that in this next budget year, it will move towards, uh, construction. And so that is the, uh, project that, uh, is at the intersection of NC sixteen and Kensington Drive. It includes, uh, adding some turn lanes there as well as, uh, sidewalks, uh, up to Connell's Point, uh, Road. Improve some site distance and other, uh, issues like that. Uh, that's just our TPO project, so that's our, uh, portion of that project. We've been saving up for it. And again, as I mentioned the first time, twenty-eight projects complete. We have one hundred projects on our master list. That is included in the budget. Uh, the five-year CIP is fully funded, as it is every single year. Anything that is not funded that you see, uh, in the master list is referred to as a future years. So that means it's beyond the, uh, the five-year time. I will reiterate that this is revisited every single year because priorities do change, uh, for all kinds of reasons. Uh, leadership changes, uh, grant opportunities come along, uh, things move up the list, things move down the list. So that's why we revisit this every single year. And that's why you adopt a new capital improvement plan every single year and you adopt a new capital improvement budget every single year. Now, the fee schedules. And so this is where I'll ask each of the departments to come up and just, uh, give a short little, uh, explanation for, uh, what these are. And so first, Mr. Todd Matthews, talk about the, the project people are dying to hear about. Uh, we can go back to that, yeah. I did, I just.
You actually did. My campsite.
Okay, so on this columbarium, uh, I built it on this side. That bottom road, they said it's real hard to sell. So they asked, did that cost less than the upper three? So we was gonna start that out at seven fifty and then the next three roads would be a thousand dollars each. And you still get the opening and closing, which is two fifty each. So, it would end up paying for itself. And one reason why we went to the columbarium, a lot of people, they come to the cemetery wanting to get a spot, but they don't, they don't want to be buried. They, so, I don't know, they just want to be up high. But that's why we decided to go with, plus we started to run out of space. We had one couple, they just moved here from New York about two years ago. With their family came in, their mom and dad on both sides, a couple of sisters and all. But they came over another week and bought twelve spots. Because they just decided not to go back, they just want, when it's their time to be around here. So that's why we went with the columbariums. Uh, you can add six more to it, they pay for themselves, so. So the bottom fee, the bottom road would be seven fifty for each one and then the next three roads would be a thousand for each one. And you can get two cremations at each spot. We didn't, I called Weddington to see what they charged and they've never called us back and then we asked another one. And they got us putting it in, said that's normally how they charge. Bottom's the lowest and then the next three is the Cadillac of them, I guess, is like, I don't know. You move on up to condo, I don't know, but, so that's how, that's how we came up with the fee. Alright.
Alright, who do we put next? Let's see. Parks and Rec? No.
Alrighty, so Park and Rec has lots of fees. Um, majority goes around rentals or, um, classes, um, and then all the, uh, you, the, basically bits and pieces that make up Park and Rec. The, we added the deposit-wise, um, we have two different fees for that, uh, depending on where you're at. Uh, we're also added different on, um, resident, non-resident, and then, uh, for profit. So those are also implemented in there as well. Um, and then the rental fees, uh, we did not, uh, adjust from last year. Basically it's, um, again, back to the resident, non-resident, and then for, um, uh, for businesses. We do have added because of the, um, rec barn. So all those are, we actually put those in last year's to get ready for this year, um, when we opened. Um, the new park is also in there now, um, and that's with the large shelter, small shelter, uh, and the picnic pods. Uh, we are going to, we've had some questions lately about how to rent. Uh, so we are gonna do some, um, question and answer on the website and then do some Facebook posts as well. So everybody knows how to and literally five clicks away and you can come and play with us. Any questions? Awesome.
Five clicks to play. Five clicks to play.
Five clicks to play. That was your dad joke too.
It was a little more tasteful, I thought, but, you know. Okay, and last, I think Lisa can come up and, uh, and discuss the planning and other fees.
Thank you. Only change to planning is a conditional zoning fee. Right now we have a flat fee, um, of like a twelve hundred and fifty dollars. We're, um, looking to add a conditional zoning greater than ten acres. This takes the majority of our staff time. Um, it's also includes their preliminary plot approval when you have a condit- conditional zoning approval. So we're, um, suggesting this includes planning and engineering, three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars plus fifty dollars per total acre. And then, um, there's also a tree inspection and tree penalty. We are looking to add the tree permit back into our ordinance if you remove a tree, um, specifically in the public right-of-way. Um, the, there's a penalty, there'll, there'll have to be a corresponding ordinance to come along with that. Um, that should be proposed in the next two to three months, um, so we will have to come back to you on the tree penalty. Thank you.
Okay, and I, she, I don't think she mentioned the footer failure repair, but that's a hundred dollar, uh, fee to reschedule that inspection in case that they go out to a site and they have to, to deem it to be, um, not compliant and then have to come back out and reschedule that. So as I mentioned before, this is a six-month process and it's an extensive part of what we do as a town. And with that, there are a whole lot of people that are part of this and, and really deserve the recognition for their contributions to doing this. First and foremost, board of commissioners, obviously for your, uh, guidance on policy, your vision and state setting. That's how we get to this point to begin with from the retreat and, uh, make all the, the tough decisions that we have for being, uh, good stewards of town resources. Starts with the board. The department heads, so they obviously have a, a key part in this as well. So they determine the, uh, resource needs for their department, make up their budget requests, and of course, uh, advocate, uh, for, for those budgets. And we work extensively through that, uh, that process, as I mentioned, uh, before. Finance staff helps, uh, greatly with, uh, revenue projections and, and guidance on expenditures and revenues as well. Uh, they're with us through this process every step of the way. Uh, the clerk's role is through, uh, noticing and distribution of the, uh, of the documents, which of course is, is how they, uh, landed in your, uh, in your inbox. And then they will come into play too in the noticing, uh, public hearing that'll come up, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. And then make sure that, uh, the document gets distributed out, um, again in that fashion. Uh, IT, so meeting support, you know, we're here doing this presentation, utilizing, uh, IT, IT support. And don't ever want to take that, uh, for granted, so thank you, thank you, IT, for your time and assistance in this. Uh, admin staff, so, uh, it's, it's all of admin staff that, uh, reviews and, and edits and looks at it ten times over. Uh, one of us reads through it and it says it, it looks good, then somebody else sees something. And then, uh, they read through it and says it looks good, then somebody else sees something. And, you know, it's just, it takes a lot to review and review and review a, um, a document. So we also have other partner organizations that are very much a part of, uh, this process. First and foremost, Union County Tax, uh, obviously, uh, they, uh, they are charged with, uh, with, uh, recovering a, a good portion of the revenue that, uh, we receive to be able to, uh, fund the town operations. Uh, we rely on projections from, uh, the state of North Carolina, uh, as well as the North Carolina League of Municipalities to help guide us in what revenue projections are. Communication staff, uh, we've had really a multi-year process that I'm sure you've noticed over the years to really get this, this budget, the look of where we want it to be. And that has a lot to do with, uh, comms, but as well as our, uh, assistant to the town manager, Melody. Uh, so they have both contributed greatly to, uh, to the design of this, uh, budget book. And I can say now, I think that, that this year, I think we're all finally happy, completely happy with the end product. And I think we will keep this moving forward. Uh, one of the things we've, we've been doing, uh, before, we don't have to do anymore. We found a good program that we can pretty much input it all in and it looks great so that we don't have to copy and paste things over. Uh, spreadsheets, things like that, which sometimes when you do that, uh, the look of things just, just changes for whatever reason they do on computers. But, uh, now we have the program, uh, in place and the people that know how to use that program to, uh, really have a good look to this, uh, budget document moving forward. So we're really, really proud, proud of that. Uh, and of course, again, thank you to, uh, to Matt Hubert and, uh, Melody Schuler and, uh, Rosie Dodd for, uh, being pretty much the budget, budget, uh, team and working through these. Uh, as you noticed, uh, you know, obviously, uh, Melody had a big part in the, uh, presentation today. Uh, giving her more, uh, exposure and experience, uh, in moving forward for her. And, uh, last but not least, I want to give a big, uh, appreciation to our HR staff who, uh, put together the salary and, uh, benefits for us. Uh, that's really where it starts, is that's really the building block for it, is you put in that information first and you build everything from, uh, there. So every year they have an extensive spreadsheet that they work through as, uh, we move along. They input all of that salary and benefit information into the budget, uh, and then we take that and go from there. So, and yes, and the many changes that go along and hopefully I have not forgotten somebody. But, uh, if, if I have, then, uh, they are appreciated too. Um, it is, as you see, it's an extensive process that we, we go through. So, what we always ask of you is to, uh, make three motions. The first one is to adopt the operating budget. The next one is to adopt the capital improvement plan. And then the third one is to adopt the capital improvement budget. The, um, the operating budget and the capital improvement budgets are. The, um, the operating budget and the capital improvement budgets are ordinances, and you would see that in your, uh, agenda packet, it's also part of the, uh, the budget book. And are required by state law for us to do, uh, by the end of June. So, the timeline moving forward is we are proposing to have the public hearing on our budget on May twenty-eighth, so you would probably hear a lot of the same things that you heard today, but then, uh, the, the general public would have more of an opportunity to hear that as well, and certainly would give their opportunity to, um, uh, to give their comments too. Uh, so I think so far, uh, the main thing that we will be adjusting is incorporating in the, uh, the Resource Officer position. Uh, would be the main adjustment so far. Budget adoption then would be, uh, two weeks later, in, uh, in June eleventh. Um, as I mentioned, you have till the end of June. I don't particularly like waiting until the second meeting of June, because that gets you to that very final week of June. If, um, if something happens, then you are up against a clock that you do not want to be up against with the state of North Carolina in trying to, uh, to pass a budget. So, uh, my recommendation is, is that we have the public hearing on May twenty-eighth. If there are any adjustments to make, we would quickly do that, and, uh, then bring it forward for a decision on June eleventh. So, that was a lot of stuff. So, now, wanna get any additional comments or feedback? And did want to revisit one thing to make sure that I'm clear about, but, uh, first, I will open it up to the Board for, uh, we can go back to any slide that you want. As I said before, we have all the department heads here for additional support. Uh, any questions that you may have that we might not be able to answer?
I just had a general question about the hiring process. Are these, uh, new positions going to be posted? How, how does that process work?
Uh, yes, that's a good, good question, and I, I should've, uh, touched on that. Uh, what we've done historically is if we've gotten the, uh, the comfort level from this budget workshop that the Board's okay with moving forward, then the ones that are budgeted for July first, we would go ahead and start advertising for. So the idea is that we can make those hires as close to July first as we can. A lot of times, we're successful in that, and somebody's able to start in the July month or August. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer. Uh, this is a, a time of year that, uh, HR does get busy with that, when we have this, uh... Now, this year, uh, we do have two that will be proposed for the start of the calendar year, for half of the year, so there'd be a little bit of that, uh, weight off of them than what they normally have. But yes, if, if the Board is comfortable with the, uh, with the ones that we have, then we would ask for that ability to go ahead and start advertising for the ones that would be budgeted for July first.
Where do you usually advertise those?
Uh, well, that would be an HR question for Wendy Davenport to give some examples of that.
So, we actually advertise in a multitude of places, and it depends on the level of the position too, but we advertise websites, social media, Indeed, um, diversity.com, all kinds of, uh, I'm sure I'm not thinking of everything, but I have a list, and some of those I received from Brenda several years ago, um, that were very helpful, and we still advertise on those.
League of Municipalities is another, uh, another one. Sometimes it depends on the job, there are numerous listservs that are out there, uh, through the school of government, that, uh, are pretty regular for advertising jobs. Uh, I don't, I don't think we've ever really had an issue getting candidates for most jobs. Uh, most jobs, we get, uh, quite a number of applicants for, um, so we, we do well.
I think it looks great, I really, I mean, I, I was comparing with last year's budget and the year before, and, uh, it seems like last year's was similar in design to this one. It's really attractive and easy to read, uh, it's great. I, it, it would be also good though, I think, to have, like, there's some aspects of it that I really like that could maybe be in other areas as well, like, um, when we were, when I was looking at the agenda packet, um, at the end, you know, it has the breakdown for all the departments, and there's like a comparison with the previous year. Um, I think it would be great to have like a overall comparison with the previous year as well. Like, uh, the, I was comparing just the overall operating budget of this year with last year, um, and it's a eight point seven percent increase. Um, and then the capital improvement, uh, budget is a twenty-six percent increase from last year's capital improvement. If you put those two numbers together, the combined increase is seventeen point three five percent. Um, I think these are the kinds of things that the public would like to know about. Um, just that comparison with previous years, you know, maybe attractively visualized, uh, perhaps with a mention of, uh, inflation, population growth, things like that. Um, I think people would like to know that the budget is growing in proportion to those things. Um, it seems like the last few years, it has been growing out of proportion to those things, because I think the estimate of population growth is what, four percent a year? And then, I know the census was twenty-twenty, right? But since then, they've been doing estimates, and they estimate something like four percent, right?
Y- yes, something like that, and we'll get, we'll get another, uh, populat- we get our population estimates in July, but they're actually from a year back, so the population estimate that we get this July will be for July twenty-twenty-three.
So, and then we have inflation, which is about three point five percent or so. So, you know, this budget though has grown seventeen point three five percent overall compared to last year, which seems a little out of proportion to the four percent growth of population and, and the inflation rate. Um, so, you know, we, I'm sure that's because revenues have increased, right? And so that, it's a general, uh, thought process that people go through is that they spend what comes in, right? Um, and because revenues have been increasing, budget has been increasing as well. But, you know, maybe we need to not spend everything that we have, and we could even consider, you know, just lowering the tax burden on the public. Get rid of the motor vehicle tax or something like that.
Well, yes, i- in regards to the, the revenues have increased, as they do just about every year, but, uh, also along with that though, our service demand increases, as well as our operational costs. Staff cost increase every year, obviously, uh, the cost to operate increases every year because, uh, every, every expenditure that we have has inflation involved with it. Uh, new contracts are always more expensive than the previous contracts for a number of different reasons. Uh, I think th- the best thing that I, that I can tell you is that I, I feel like we're in a comfortable place for what it costs to operate the town. Now, I can tell you that, that we bring in more money than we spend, and that's where we want to be. I don't think we'd want to be anywhere else. Uh, I'm very proud of what we do with our revenue projections, and then so far, since I've been in charge of the budget, but we've done very well with those. Uh, we want to, uh, be prepared though, in case, you know, things do go wrong, or something does happen, so that we do have a healthy reserve to do that. So that's why you, number one, you conservatively estimate your revenues, so that the hope is, is that you bring in more revenues than you receive. And then, of course, when you get to the end of a budget year, you hope, and we almost exclusively do, our departments don't spend all that money for, uh, various reasons. Uh, occasionally, uh, they do, uh, but, you know, if you do that, you do a budget adjustment, and then you, uh, move money from one department over to another to rectify that. But as you've seen, we have been able to, uh, uh, put money back into our fund balance, which has allowed us to accomplish a lot of projects, to build a lot of, of infrastructure, and do things that we've not been able to do in this entire history of the town until we had those resources to, to do that. Um, you know, we, we're in a place now that we really never have been as a town. Some of that is good fortune, but I think a lot of that is also good financial stewardship of our resources. And so I will, I will always land there. Uh, I think though, to your point, that, uh, an image, which I think is an easy, uh, insertion into the budget of what those differences are, I think that's good, and a transparent to do.
Percentage difference change, I think, would be great, because, um, you guys did include the, uh, raw numbers of the various years. I think it went back, uh, two years, um, just to show comparison. Uh, but maybe just to include the percentage of change would be great, and, and also just to apply that whole, uh, way of displaying it to the budget as a whole to compare with previous years. I mean, I know that a budget is probably gonna fluctuate based on things like sales tax, you know, that can be volatile sometimes. Um, you, you know, if you had a graph of the budget, and you had a line to indicate what the, uh, inflation was, and what the population growth was, um, you know, the line of the budget wouldn't necessarily track exactly with those that might go above, or maybe sometimes below, but I think in general, uh, we would wanna try and track with those lines.
And we could easily do that, um, it's just a matter of creating the, the most appealing-looking image, I guess you could say, as to what that would, um, what would that would look like. But then, I can include that in my budget message, happy to do that. That's an additional sentence or two, as well as adding that, uh, adding that to the budget. But, you know, we're, we're a town that, you know, has grown exponentially. We all know that, and then there's a cost to that, to operate the town, how we currently have it, have it constructed.
I'd just like to say thank you for the work that you and your staff have done on this budget, and that having been on this, in this town longer than anyone here, um, on the Board currently, where we are now, we are farther along than where we were in the past, with how the budget is done, with how it is planned, with the work that is put into it. And we do not, you do not, I know, in talking to you, spend everything that we do have. There are a lot of no's that come along with this budget that staff hears all the time from you, and proper planning and how to work through the budget so that it is, uh, serving the best needs of the town moving forward. And that has always been your mindset and your motto as you have taken this on, and so has it been along with staff. So we do, we are in a better place than we've ever been. We have a credit rating for the first time that we've never had before. We ensure that funds are put aside just in case with proper planning, to make sure that everything is not spent, but that we do have a reserve, and that we have something to fall back on, and just wanna say thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I did do some analysis on the percentage differences in various departments, and, um, I noticed that business development is increasing by thirty-eight point eight percent. That's quite a big jump, um, is there, uh, some comments you could make about that?
I think the main reason is the, uh, uh, staff position that was added, uh, this current fiscal year.
There's a business development also, a new department that was developed now, so that with staff, there is going to be a need for, uh, with that department being new, that there is an additional need for that staffing personnel to be there to assist.
That, that is correct, and we, we did fulfill that, that first step here with, uh, doing that mid, mid-budget year, and that is continuing into the next budget. Now, I did want to revisit one thing to make sure we're moving in the direction that I understand we need to, and that's going back to comms. So just want to make sure the thought's there, and what you'd like to do to proceed forward.
I'm hesitant to add a new full-timer, isn't it?
I'm in support of an in-house comms director.
Now, isn't this something that we have been working on for at least four or five years?
We have talked about it for a while, yes.
And to transition so that we do have this in-house person who can really, um, directly serve the needs of the position and the town, and work directly with staff?
Yes.
And isn't this something that Haven Creative has also more or less requested in moving forward with the amount of work that they are doing on the outside to have the ability now for us to have one of our own inside to do this work?
Yes, they've understood, and they've been, obviously, sitting here a part of this process every year that we've talked about it.
Yes, and I told Jeff, whatever we need to do, we will accommodate, okay, that too, so...
As support.
Well, no, I told him initially, we talked about, you know, extending until next July, um, and then we said, maybe just half the year. But I'm saying, whether you decide to get someone or not get someone, Haven can support fully until next July if needed, that's one thing.
Now, you're saying support until next July?
I'm saying, sit in the seat. If you choose to not hire an internal person...
This year?
Yes, we can continue for one more year. If you don't wanna hire, I mean, you do hire a new person, we would do that fractional until December, and then, you know, step it out, so we've made plans for both, just to wait and see what you prefer.
Now, you said an additional one year. Does that mean by next July that you would then still be looking for us to...
Decide, yep.
To decide to hire someone in-house?
Correct.
Okay, so if you're looking at it, the goal then is to hire someone in-house?
Yes, either way.
Within the next six months to the next year, the goal is to hire somebody in-house, and you would support that person or assist moving forward?
Correct.
Okay, so I've heard one support, one would prefer not. How does everybody else feel?
I'm a little hesitant right now, only because it was brought up also that this person that we're looking for may not have everything we need. And so now we're talking about contracting extra money, and paying someone a full salary and benefits, and still needing an outside consultation. And so, and then Haven's done an amazing job getting us on track where we need to be. We're able to keep a lot of that in place. Is there a way that we could do it without bringing on an extra person?
But Harry Haven's goal, as she just stated, is still to... But Haven's goal, as she just stated, is still to remove themselves, phase out. So we don't know who the comms person is or who the comms person will have if they will have everything we need, most of what we need or some of what we need until we hire someone. But they are willing to work with that person, whoever that person is, and to hire the best person to fill the position for the town moving forward. Is that what I'm understanding? I'm getting that.
And Jenny, I mean, is, is that difficult to find people that have all those skills?
At a comms director position, because the position you're talking about is comms director.
Yeah. So could you hire a comms?
I know a lot of directors that I work with that couldn't do a lot of the engineering that I do.
Right.
That's my big concern.
Like you're going to get more strategy.
That's to Commissioner Wedro's concern. If you get a director in who hasn't worked Photoshop in a while.
Correct.
And isn't so good with the PowerPoint these days.
Which is.
We're still working with Haven or someone like Haven.
That's why we approached it in the way of, um, providing the, I would say not the entry-level staff first, which is why we, we've recommended that we get, you know, a digital marketing person first to do the website work and the social work. That person had to understand the CMS of the website. They had to understand how to post a social. And I stayed in the position of strategy because you're right. I think that the strategic side of developing the comms plan each year and developing, you know, how we're going to communicate all the plans, um, is more of the director level position. So we were trying to do, um, more of a cost savings to build the department up. So then you got to that last step, you know? So you could do a comms manager if you want, because if you are looking at director, you are looking at a six-figure salary. So, um, and then I can stay in, you know, a director's seat for six, you know, like you said, while you have maybe the manager's salary. The point is you're, you really do need to build that internal seat eventually. It's just whether or not you're pro-, you know, how long you're prolonging it.
And there is a, a current staff member right now that I'm assuming has some of these skills.
Yeah. So we just sent to me into training at NC three C. So each year I'm trying to develop her further to, my thought was she becomes the comms manager, right? So you're kind of incrementally getting there versus having to hire that salary right away in that role. Um, it's always more cost-effective, I think, to train up, right, internal talent. Um, so we thought.
So we could train up by hiring someone at a lower cost base right now?
And train them to get to a director.
And train them to get to where they need to be and you would then lend that support as needed to this individual?
Yep.
Or, um, assist with what guidance that individual may need to have a training moving forward?
Yes. And that's really what we talked about with Tamiya. So we brought her on. She didn't have government experience, but we've been, I've been, you know, mentoring her and getting her up to that level with the goal of, okay, what's her next step? What's her professional, you know, what does that look like? Um, and so, yeah, you could get now a comms manager and get them to that director level without having to hire a six-figure salary with an extra fifteen percent on top. So maybe that building block looks like sixty, seventy, whatever that number is, and then fractional Haven, but it's not, you know, a six-figure and a Haven six-figure.
So we could cut the cost and do it.
Even, yeah. And I just wanted to kind of streamline things because it seems like I see when I go to Park and Rec events, they're taking the photos and then ribbon cutting, someone else is taking the photos and then.
There's a lot going on.
These meetings, right. So I guess streamline, streamlining that or having, I don't know if Parks and Rec can post, would that take some responsibility off? Because I think they do that already. They do now, yes. So I guess we need, I guess need to define all the positions also so that we're not, there seems to be redundancy in some. Yeah, it, it probably does feel like that on the outside end. And, um, we, over the years, were posting for Parks and Rec and, um, the problem is, and I think you remember in the retreat, we were saying we were posting like forty-eight to six, three times a month. And now we're basically spamming everyone's social feed. Sorry, Parks and Rec, but they do take up a lot of posts. So, and they've been fighting for years to get their own social channel. And a lot of our other clients, their Parks and Rec department does have their own social channel for that very reason because it gets muddied into the official business of the town and you're not getting emergency alerts. So we've allowed them this year to break out and do their own social channel. Um, and it is a lot of time and effort to do that, but how all the posts still run through Tamiya and through our HubSpot portal to make sure it's, you know, AP standard and on-brand. And we still create the images for those. Um, but there's, there's a lot of social channels happening at the same time. So we're, we're doing the police department, right? And we have the town one and we're monitoring the Parks and Rec one.
And so the templates are there, so they just have to use.
Yeah. So there's social design templates, but the funny, the hard thing about templates is you still have to have a design and understand where to put, copy and tags and stuff. And so we're kind of, um, working through some of that. Like we'll hand off a template, but as a designer, I'm like, wait, oh, but you still can't read the font or it's still not this. But it's, design aside, the comms department isn't just branding like designs and pretty logos, right? It's a lot more of the, who are we going to communicate with? What are the issues that are coming up? How do we recommunicate that? How do we create simple language that people understand the budget booklet, for instance? I'm grateful that Jeff let me have my hands on this document because, you know, in the last ten years, a lot of town managers wouldn't really give us the, uh, the opportunity. So to be able to pull it and go, let's pull these bullets out. Let's put this, you know, call this out, the capital projects, um, what was the other long form, the development ordinance? The point is comms working with staff to make things more simple to understand and not sound like a bunch of alphabet soup like ROI, KPI, whatever. That's really the strength of, you know, a communications team. It's not just like the, the social media stuff.
Yes. They did a great job at, at taking a, quite frankly, boring document of spreadsheets and PDFs and things and, and created a really spectacular looking. But I would, maybe we should put that up for an award somewhere because, uh, I, I think it would be, I think it would be a contender. Um, but I digress. I guess it's back to the, uh.
So could we look at a position of more managerial than directorship?
We could.
For this? And, um, if to me is a person that we are looking still to work with in this or someone else that we are working with, that that person would then, um, come in at that level and then, uh, see how they can move up, you know, with the support of, um, Haven?
And then maybe we can find someone who has the missing pieces. If we have Tamiya trained in this area, maybe we can find the manager that has the digital experience, the Photoshop, uh, all the Adobe stuff. Uh, you know, there's a, a lot to go into that, but people that know how to do it, they could do it like that. So, um, and it is something that they're teaching in the high schools and colleges now. It might be, not be as difficult as it was ten years ago to find the two people together.
Canvas.
Yes, Canvas makes it easier.
And just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, so we would still have the, the two positions there, but instead of the director level, you would have it at the, uh, the manager level, which you would be able to, to save some money there on salary and benefits. And then we can go back and work with comms and, uh, HR on that between now and the, uh, the public hearing. And so, I mean, you'd see an adjustment down, uh, not, not a tremendous amount, but there would be some savings there.
Jeff, I'm of the opinion that, um, this particular role requires a significant variety of highly specialized skills to be successful. And I have always maintained that marketing, public relations is, it should be a contracted role. And so that's, that's my position. I, I think I'd be interested in what Haven would come back with if they could propose what a, a full FTE or a half FTE would look like. That's, that's my position.
I would agree with that. And again, I, I think about the, the director side of thing and then I think of somebody of Jenny's background running her own company. And I know enough about people that run their own companies to know that they can do anything. And that's why they're running their own company.
I know.
That's why you're talking. Um, but that being said, to, to have someone on staff that does that, my worry is that we open up a department and the department then grows because we think of needs that the department then has. And you end up with, you know, five people, six people on the payroll, like we just talked about with, what was it, the, uh, business development group that was recently formed and that's now growing. So one of the biggest hits to a budget is creating a new department. And that, that's my fear is that we're taking a new department to do something that isn't necessarily the business of the town. You know, comms is an aspect of running the town, but it's not the business of the town. So this still seems like something that I think more efficiently could be formed.
Well, and one of the reasons, I'll, I'll tell you, why we decided to, I guess, create a comms department. I mean, that stuff was housed in admin before. And, uh, in our discussion of putting together this budget document, we thought that it would be more transparent to have that in a separate spot so that people would know what those costs are.
We appreciate that. So thank you.
So if I understand right, you would like for Haven to present a, an amount for having a full-time or potentially a part-time person?
Yeah, yeah. So my idea was just, uh, you know, two different options, right? What, what does an FTE look like? You put somebody in, in, um, in the office and they're there to answer.
Paid by Haven.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right. Well, paid by the town.
Well, I meant like running through my payroll, not your payroll.
You're going to carry the payroll, yeah, right.
Right, right, right.
And then, and, and then, um, that way all the different departments can go to that one person at any time. Or, uh, maybe a half FTE. Maybe they're only here ha- half the week.
Kind of like the North Point situation.
Yeah. Well, yeah, two-thirds versus half. Yeah, right. You get the idea. But then that, that scenario allows us the ability to, uh, uh, you know, scale it, uh, or.
Potentially assess if you really need that full-time even.
There you go.
Yeah.
That's the idea.
Okay.
So you're going to bring that back at the twenty-eight?
Yes, we can do that. We have time to do that. We're a month out. Um, we will get together on that and make sure that is part of the public hearing that we present to, uh, the board as well as the, the public. So we'll, we will, uh, move to make that adjustment. We will also make the adjustment for the, uh, uh, position that would be shared with North Point. So those are the two main adjustments that I'm hearing to what we currently have. Uh, well, yes, it's adding the, the imagery for the, uh, um, additional, uh, the percentage change in the budget. Okay. Well, congratulations. You made it through another one.
You made it through the first one.
Yeah.
Yes. Successful.
Thank you for all of your time.
Yes.
And your guidance and your direction.
And thank you to the board for your collaboration, your open communication, your friendly dialogue. I think it went fairly well today. And again, thank you for the town. Um, it says a lot about the management of this town to know that we have a ninety-six percent reserve. Um, as a citizen of Waxhaw, that, that makes me feel good. Um, because we hear all kinds of stories every day about the economy and where things are headed and where things are going. And knowing that the town has a ninety-six percent reserve is, it's good to know. So thank you. And it's, it's, it's a testament to the work that's been done long before I got here. So thank you.
Thank you. It's one of the things that I'm the most proud of, quite frankly.
You should be.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Are you sure?
Uh.
I'm sensing hesitation.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
This mo-, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.